New General Manager for the Ford Wyoming Center. So, of course, the Ford Wyoming Center, formerly the Casper Event Center, has been under private management since October of 2016. And from that time through January of this year, the General Manager was Brad Murphy. And so Brad did choose to retire in January, and so we wish him well. But we are fortunate enough to have gotten Kirk Goodman as our new GM, and we're really excited about that. So OVG 360, formerly Spectra, went through a pretty extensive process to select Mr. Goodman. And of course, the city of Casper, as the contract administrator, was intimately involved in that process. And so we had final say and are very happy to welcome Kirk to our team. So he has managed a number of public facilities in a number of different states, as you probably saw in the memo. But now he is in Casper and excited to be. And I can tell you from the last several weeks working with Kirk, it's been a pleasure, and we're really excited for the partnership. So I would like to turn some time over to Kirk to give you a little information about himself and also to entertain any questions that you might have for him.
Mayor, Councilors, pleasure to be here. Good to see those of you who I've had a chance to meet again. I want to thank you for rolling out the carpet with this wonderful weather for someone who moved from South Texas, been enjoying so far. But I am a native of northeastern Pennsylvania, 600-person town. The West has called my name for a long time. I have, when I found the opportunity to not only join the team at OVG, but also come to a town like Casper, it was a huge draw for me. So I'm excited to be here. Everyone in this entire town, from the day I stepped on the ground to meet Carter and Zalima earlier, I've never met nicer people in my entire life. Coming from Houston, when someone says hello in the street, my first thought is, I don't want to give you $5, leave me alone. Here, everyone is genuinely kind and welcoming. And the staff we have at the Ford Wyoming Center is top-notch. I'm excited to work with them. I'm excited to work with all of you. And if there's anything I can further tell you about myself, I'm absolutely welcome and open to do so.
If you think people are nice now, you start giving out $5.
We're working on it. Hopefully, great shows that will be worth more than $5.
I guess I'd like to ask, what are your plans? What are your visions? What do you see one year, two years, three years down the road? I know you're new into it, but I know you know what our past has been like. So what are you envisioning for the Ford Wyoming Center?
It's been exciting from the first, this is my fourth week here, and working with Zalima and finding out the plans for the city to reinvest in the facility, I think are exciting. You have a 40-year-old building. It's obviously 40 years old. You know the problems that come with a 40-year-old building. But the team who has been before me and currently have taken such great care of the facility, these little additions we're going to be making for the next few years are really exciting. Adding to the breadth of what we do entertainment-wise, we're really excited about. We are building more and more relationships with great promoters like Live Nation, AEG. We hopefully will have a big announcement to make about a concert in November before too long. That'll be exciting. And just continuing to offer not only a lot of programming, but also a diverse level of programming that'll meet a lot of people's needs, not only here in the community, but in the surrounding area. And hopefully, just hit a lot of folks who will find a reason to come to Casper, come to a show, patronize the local businesses, stay in the hotels, and just continue to drive that economic benefit that the facility has.
Doesn't look like we have any more questions for you. So welcome, Mr. Goodman, and thank you very much. We wish you well, of course.
Thank you.
Zalima, thank you.
And happy birthday.
Yesterday.
Do we have a mic issue? Oh, okay, very good. Well, moving on, it looks like we have a turkey discussion with the Game and Fish, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A number of weeks ago, representatives of the Game and Fish reached out to us and indicated an interest to have a conversation about turkeys in our community and some of the problems that overpopulation creates and those kinds of things. And maybe some things that we could do to help them in their management efforts as it relates to ordinances potentially that you could consider, specifically along the lines of a feeding ban potentially, if council were to see fit, as to that being a topic that you'd entertain. And so tonight, that conversation is to propose that question to you, not in the sense of whether or not you are for it, but in the sense of whether or not you would entertain the dialogue along those lines. And so with that, if I could turn the time to our friends from Game and Fish here, we can hear what they have to say.
Yes, sir, please.
Can you all hear me? Thank you to everyone for having me here, City Council, Mr. Mayor. I'm Brandon Warner. I'm a wildlife biologist here with Game and Fish. I came here to talk to you about City Ordinance 6.04.040, which is Keeping of Pets, Livestock or Fowl, Limitations Feeding of Non-Domestic Animals Prohibited. Section C, Paragraph 1, it states, "It shall be unlawful for any person to provide shelter, feed, or otherwise entice any non-domestic animal to gather or frequent, with the exception of birds, squirrels, turkeys, and feral cats, maintained by a keeper, onto any public area or to any property of that person." I'm here on the behalf of the Wyoming Game and Fish to ask to remove wild turkeys from that list. As I'm sure you have all noticed, the last few years, we've been having an explosion of wild turkeys in and around Casper. They're really causing a lot of issues. We've had a lot of really good spring moisture, which makes the forbs pop, makes really good nesting cover, then allows the broods to really, really expand, and the population could expand again in 2023. So the Wyoming Game and Fish deals with a lot of calls. I have about 17 recorded complaints from in and around the Casper area just in 2022. I can provide the council names and phone numbers of some of those people if they wish. Some of the problems that these people are talking about includes droppings on park trails, damages to houses and trees when the turkeys go up to roost, aggressive turkeys, turkeys jumping on cars, slowing traffic, the risk of disease transmission, and really just too many. So artificially feeding these turkeys really congregates them. Going back to the aggressive behavior, I'm not sure if you guys remember Thomas Gobbles. He was a famous turkey that had his own Facebook page that was causing a lot of issues up at the college. Now, I'm not sure what happened to him. He doesn't seem to be around anymore. That was honestly before my time. But feeding them, again, really amplifies the damage that they cause. So when you're feeding them, they're getting in these groups that they normally wouldn't be with. The roosting in these trees, they're just depositing a lot of feces. And with that, if I could send around a few pictures to the council, the first one is turkeys on a really nice Subaru over on East Brookview Road, and the second and third over on Plattview Apartments, where they are defecating onto cars, onto houses. And both of these pictures are taken less than 30 yards from a known feeding area. Let's see. Other than that, artificial feeding can increase the breeding rate of the turkeys and can make unnatural pulp production. And another thing that we deal with at the base of the mountain, on Garden Creek where people are feeding, is these deer and turkeys are coming in, and the mountain lions are following them in. So it artificially congregates predators even to these species. I'm not saying that'll happen in town, but you never know anything that can show up. But perhaps the biggest issue that we're finding now is highly pathogenic avian influenza, or HBAI is what we call it. Avian influenza is what most people call it. Back in April of 2022, we had 13 confirmed turkeys in Johnson County get it. And it kind of went away in wild turkeys for a while. But in Natrona County now, we're really getting it in some raptors, and the geese are really getting it. Haven't had it confirmed in turkeys. It could happen. The new strain of it has been affecting some meatso carnivores. So we had a fox over in Thermopolis come back positive with it. So again, artificially feeding these turkeys congregates them. The higher risk of transmission between them of HBAI, and just so the councils were, HBAI is eutonic, meaning it can transfer to humans, which is extremely rare. We've only had one case of it, or I guess seen one case, and that was down in Colorado, nothing in Wyoming. So other than feeding, what can Game and Fish do to try to limit these turkey conflicts we have? Well, the number one thing that we can do is to reduce the feeding and the artificial congregating. But can we trap? Is that an option? Absolutely, in the future. However, with HBAI, we're not allowed to move these turkeys throughout the state. So any turkeys we would get would have to be euthanized. Finding a place to trap turkeys can be difficult in town with city parks or in someone's yard like that. And it's extremely time-consuming, but it's always a management option that we have. But when our population's as big as it is right now, thinging out a little bit here and a little bit there is not going to solve our issue immediately. Whenever I do get a report of somebody that is feeding, even though they're legally allowed to do it through Game and Fish and through the city of Casper, I do go talk to them and give them the reasons why they should or should not, or why they shouldn't be feeding, sorry. And some of them are really open to like, hey, I probably shouldn't be feeding. And I'm not here to be like, we want, you know, anybody that has a bird feeder to pull it. That's not why I'm here right now. We just want anyone that's blatantly going out there, throwing corn or whatever grain on the ground that's congregating these things, to essentially stop doing it. And I totally understand that. People love when the birds come in their yard and everything like that, but just putting a limit on it. And I think that's about everything I have, and thank you guys for having me.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, sorry, what was your name?
I'm Brandon.
Brandon, thanks, Brandon. It sounded like you were relatively new to the agency, so you may not be able to help me out. But I feel like this has been a conversation going on in our community for a while. And so do you have any historical context that you can give me as far as like ordinances that, or maybe this is a question for the City Manager as well? Has City Council had this discussion before? What was the resolution, if any? I just feel like this has come up a couple times, and so I'm just curious to put it more into context. Thank you.
To my knowledge, when deer, or it could be when this ordinance was made, I'm not exactly for sure. But I do know when deer were removed on the list or when this ordinance was created, somehow turkeys did slip through the cracks on that. And my boss had mentioned to me that there was at one time a lot of talks about it, particularly when deer were removed from feeding.
I apologize, sorry. I don't see any hands up, so no other questions for this? Carter, are we looking for some direction? Or what are you looking for here, I guess?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, all I'm looking for is whether or not council would be willing to have further conversations about potentially amending ordinances as Mr. Warner suggested, amending it in such a way that wild turkeys could be removed, as it were. So.
Would everybody be okay with that? Thumbs up? Okay, I think some more information would probably warrant it, especially maybe some public input, since they're certainly the ones that, you know, we'd like to hear both sides of it. But yeah, I think we can certainly do that.
Okay. Would council like to see another work session item then on this topic?
I believe so.
Okay, great. We will do that then.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Really, thank you for all for having me.
Okay, moving on. Carter, addition of a full-time position for your Public Utilities Division.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are in the process right now, believe it or not, of actually creating our budget that we'll be presenting to you in May. And one of the very first things that we go through is with respect to trying to get our heads around what it is that we might need by way of full-time personnel additions, if you will, positions that we might need to add. As we were going through this process, one of the proposals that came forward was with respect to water distribution, wherein the division was cut back, as it were, some two or more years ago, in the spirit of austerity measures, if you will, to the extent that by the time we got to this point, that particular work area, that division endured not only the moves from, you know, trying to trim back positions in that area, but also with respect to some of the mandates that were handed down throughout the COVID period. You'll recall that we were not allowed to follow up on service discontinuances and disconnects and so on. We weren't allowed to follow up on bad bills and those kinds of things. Fast forward to where we're at now. We've expanded our network by more than 1,700 accounts. And with regard to some of the catch-up that we need to do, we are also in a situation where disconnects are big numbers now. And we're in a situation where zero reads are something we haven't followed up on over time as well. We're in a position where, in my estimation, if we wait until July 1, our negative position with respect to some of these efforts that we've been able to follow up on in previous years, probably five or more years ago, is, will be exacerbated should we wait until the summertime to try to follow up on this and make these positions come to pass. My proposal is that instead of waiting until the middle of the summer, where we can start the process of recruiting for this position, we get a start on that now, so that we can be ahead of the season of the year where disconnects are typically our highest, because they are seasonal, and hopefully get ahead of the, you know, the business proposal in a more effective manner, instead of waiting to when the situation is actually seasonally worse than what we would normally experience. So my request is to allow us to go ahead and move forward. We do have funding in place that would make this happen if council approves. And then we could get to work in trying to get out of the hole we're in with respect to disconnects and zero reads and so on.
Seems reasonable. Everybody good to go with that? Any questions? No? All right, there you have it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
You betcha. Let's move on to agenda review, please.
Mr. Mayor, the only item that I have to bring to council's attention tonight is with regard to the removal of an item that council might have otherwise been expecting to see tonight. And so I was hoping that Jill could give us a two-minute rundown as to where we're at with that particular item and what the status is and when you might be able to see it again.
Yes, please. Ms. Johnson?
That's not on. Mayor, Councilors? Thank you for having me. Very quickly, so there is a new program that came out, I believe, in November. It's called the LEWAP program. It's a low-income home water assistance program. This program, how it's set up, it's a federal grant program. The grant goes to the state. The state then does the applications for the participants, and then they send us the money, and then we apply that to their accounts. So what we have to do in order to be a part of this program is we have to become a vendor. So currently, what we are working on is getting set up as a vendor with the program. It is taking a little bit of time, so we are in this process. We have the application completed. It's gone through our legal review, and it's gone back to the state for them to review our legal requests. So we are working on this very diligently. We do not have it completed quite yet, but we are hoping to have it fairly soon. The program, just so people are aware, it only covers water and wastewater. So when you get your utility bill, it has other stuff on there besides those two items. So even though this program may pay your water wastewater, you would still have a remaining portion of your bill that you would need to be paying. So the program pays past-due bills, and that's what it's really set up for, to make sure people don't get shut off. So if you have questions, I have Brandy here, who can help me answer questions. But I'm happy to take whatever questions you have.
Lisa?
So is this LEWAP program the same that Rocky Mountain Power has established?
So this is not an electric utility program. It's for home water only, home water and wastewater only.
Okay. Very similar, okay.
Jill, when can we expect, of course, we're talking about government, state level especially, but do we have a timeline?
Like I said, we are waiting for a response from them regarding our legal verbiage requests. So we are hoping to get something back from them, hopefully in the next month. I mean, the program is funded, I believe, through September 30, which is the federal fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Jill? No? Thank you very much for coming. Before we wrap up the pre-meeting, Carter, I did want to make sure that, I noticed Chief wasn't here tonight, but when we have the work session on the turkeys, I want to make sure that we get some way in from the police department as well. Thank you. That concludes pre-meeting. We'll take about a seven-minute break and meet back here and start our regularly scheduled City Council meeting. I would like to remind everyone to silence their cell phones, and the council meetings are televised and can be viewed on cable, Channel 192. I now call the February 7, 2023 regular council meeting to order. The chair would, I gotta find that spot, excuse me. Chair would entertain a motion to excuse the absence of Councilor Haskins and Councilor Bond this evening.
So moved, seconded.
Moved by Councilman, Councilor Pacheco, and seconded by Councilor Pollak. Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, the motion passes.
Very good. At this time, would you please join Councilor Jensen in the pledge of allegiance? Please state your name, direct all questions and comments to the mayor and only the mayor. No personal attacks on staff or council will be tolerated. Council will not respond to personnel matters. These will be referred to our city manager. Questions posed by speakers may or may not be responded to by councilors. Presentations will be limited to five minutes, and the duplication of speakers will not be allowed nor will time extensions be permitted. Please note that public hearings and ordinances each have their own comment period. Please hold your comments on those items until we reach them.
Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you for your service and the members of council. Also, I congratulate the new members and wish you much success. A few weeks ago, you approved an ordinance on anti-discrimination, and I had spoken about some of my concerns at that time. I did send forward an email, and I'm looking forward to a response in writing from the city attorney on that. In the meantime, there's been mention of a case in Colorado about a baker, and this baker ended up in the Supreme Court after so many years. He had a gay couple that came in, wanted to get some baked goods. He said he could do the baked goods, but he was unable, because of his religion, to bake a cake honoring their marriage. And so he did win in court, but I just read recently that there's another case. The same day that the Supreme Court ruled in his favor, a transgender activist came in and wanted him to bake a cake, and also bake a cake with an image of a Satan smoking marijuana. So this does go on. And my suggestion, I know the ordinance is in force, and I hopefully, hopefully, this can be beneficial, but in many communities, they have a human relations commission. I don't know if we have one here, but I think that might be a better way to reduce tensions and come to a better decision, and I just put that out as an option to consider. Will I take any comments?
Any questions?
Yes, the community that I came from in Pennsylvania had one in the suburbs of Philadelphia, and it seemed to work well when there was a dispute and somebody, a lot of times there's a misunderstanding, and rather than going through the legal process, they have the parties get together, and they actually end up finding more common ground that way.
Mediation.
Mediation, per se. And it's a citizen voluntary group of people from that community that get together and discuss that. I'm not sure whether they're still doing it now, because I've been here two years.
Interesting. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would wish to speak to the council this evening? Okay, with that said, we will move on. Please read the consent and tenet titles.
Establish February 21st, 2023, as the public hearing date for consideration of 7A1A, new special malt beverage permit number one for Spuds Baseball Club LLC, doing business as Spuds Baseball, located at 330 Katy Lane, and 7A1B, an ordinance amending Casper Municipal Code, Chapter 1.04, general provisions.
The chair would entertain a motion to by minute action establish a public hearing date as just read.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Councilor Cathy, seconded by Councilor Pollock. Any abstentions or nay votes?
Could I abstain from item 7A1A, please?
Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, the motion passes.
Very good. At this time, would you please join Councilor Jensen in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the January 3rd, 2023, regular council meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on January 18th, 2023. So moved. Second. Moved by Councilor Cathley, seconded by Councilor Inger Brethson. Any amendments? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all councilors voting aye, the motion passes.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the January 17th, 2023, regular council meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on January 26th, 2023.
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Pollock, seconded by Councilor Inger Brethson. Thank you. Any amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all councilors voting aye, the motion passes.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the January 17th, 2023, executive session.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Gamroth, seconded by Councilor Pollock. Any amendments? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote, sorry.
With all councilors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the February 7th, 2023, bills and claims as audited by city manager Napier.
So moved.
Moved by Vice Mayor Checo, seconded by Councilor Gamroth. Any abstentions? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all councilors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to welcome members of the Casper Rotary Club to do a presentation to council. Please come forward and introduce yourself and say a few words, if you will.
Hello, I'm Anthony Martinez with the Casper Rotary. This is our president.
Miami Sleep.
Yeah, and I'm President-elect Dan Odell.
We are here to present, we've been working with the city. We do a lot of fundraising throughout the Rotary Casper Club internationally and for the local projects. We chose to support the city of Casper on the bus shelters, and we are going to also take care of the two shelters that we did fund. So we are paying for the construction and the structure within itself, and then we will maintain it on the two sites, one on 12th and Lowell area, and the second one is across from the Sunrise Shopping Center toward the senior centers over there. So just wanted to present the check. Mr. Carter?
Thank you very much.
Carter. Thank you. This is the first one of these I get to do, and I'm actually quite proud to do this. So Amber, if you don't mind standing up, I know you have no idea. This is a certificate of recognition from the Old Yellowstone District presented to Councilor Amber Pollock. The City of Casper and the Old Yellowstone District Advisory Committee recognize your commitment to the downtown development initiatives in Casper. We appreciate the dedication of your personal time and your genuine interest in the neighborhood businesses and reported on activities to the city council. We sincerely thank you for all of your efforts.
Thank you.
Now is the time we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with the council to come forward. As stated on the first page of the agenda, we ask the following. Please state your name, direct all questions and comments to the mayor and only the mayor. No personal attacks on staff or council will be tolerated. Council will not respond to personnel matters. These will be referred to our city manager. Questions posed by speakers may or may not be responded to by councilors. Presentations will be limited to five minutes, and the duplication of speakers will not be allowed nor will time extensions be permitted. Please note that public hearings and ordinances each have their own comment period. Please hold your comments on those items until we reach them.
Nope.
It's not on yet. There you go.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Ross Schriftman. Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you for your service and the members of council. Also, I congratulate the new members and wish you much success. A few weeks ago, you approved an ordinance on anti-discrimination, and I had spoken about some of my concerns at that time. I did send forward an email, and I'm looking forward to a response in writing from the city attorney on that. In the meantime, there's been mention of a case in Colorado about a baker, and this baker ended up in the Supreme Court after so many years. He had a gay couple that came in, wanted to get some baked goods. He said he could do the baked goods, but he was unable, because of his religion, to bake a cake honoring their marriage. And so he did win in court, but I just read recently that there's another case. The same day that the Supreme Court ruled in his favor, a transgender activist came in and wanted him to bake a cake, and also bake a cake with an image of a Satan smoking marijuana. So this does go on. And my suggestion, I know the ordinance is in force, and I hopefully, hopefully, this can be beneficial, but in many communities, they have a human relations commission. I don't know if we have one here, but I think that might be a better way to reduce tensions and come to a better decision, and I just put that out as an option to consider. Will I take any comments?
Any questions? Now, I have one for you.
Yeah.
Are you familiar with this human relations commission that you speak of? Have you ever?
Yes, the community that I came from in Pennsylvania had one in the suburbs of Philadelphia, and it seemed to work well when there was a dispute and somebody, a lot of times there's a misunderstanding, and rather than going through the legal process, they have the parties get together, and they actually end up finding more common ground that way.
Mediation.
Mediation, per se. And it's a citizen voluntary group of people from that community that get together and discuss that. I'm not sure whether they're still doing it now, because I've been here two years.
Interesting. Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Does Ross? Anyone else in the audience who would wish to speak to the council this evening? Okay, with that said, we will move on. Please read the consent and tenet titles.
Establish February 21st, 2023, as the public hearing date for consideration of 7A1A, new special malt beverage permit number one for Spuds Baseball Club LLC, doing business as Spuds Baseball, located at 330 Katy Lane, and 7A1B, an ordinance amending Casper Municipal Code, Chapter 1.04, general provisions.
The chair would entertain a motion to by minute action establish a public hearing date as just read.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Councilor Cathley, seconded by Councilor Pollock. Any abstentions or nay votes?
Could I abstain from item 7A1A, please?
Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With Councilor Pollock's abstention noted and all others voting aye, the motion passes.
I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the ordinance amending the Casper Municipal Code pertaining to the definition of flag lots. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Liz Becker to Jay Carter Napier dated January 12th, 2023, as well as exhibit number two, affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated January 9th, 2023.
Thank you. Council will now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes, and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of an ordinance amending the definition of flag lots to please approach the lectern. Oh, I did. Please forgive me. Mr. City Manager, did you have a report on the flag lots? I'm sorry.
It is completely okay. It's your meeting. I mean.
But I need you, man.
You might have done it up for me.
I need you. No, I did not. I did not. Do you have anything?
Real brief, real brief.
Yes, please. Thank you.
The idea of a flagpole lot and, you know, the unique character that those kinds of lots present our community are recognized within the code currently. The change that's being proposed for council to consider is whether or not that particular access to the nearest street ought to require a 24-foot access versus a 12-foot access that's being proposed by staff and your planning commission. And so that really is the question for council to consider, is whether or not the change from that 24 feet to 12 is appropriate, particularly for residential lots. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, I defer back.
Thank you, sir. At this time now, I will ask any individuals who wish to speak in favor of the ordinance amending the definition of flag lots to please approach the lectern. There being no one to speak for, at this time, I would speak, or ask for anyone that wishes to oppose the flaglot ordinance. Okay, there being no one to speak for or against, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending Chapter 17.08 of the Casper Municipal Code pertaining to the definition of flag lots.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to approve on first reading the ordinance just read.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilor Inger Brethson, seconded by Councilor Pollock. Discussion. I would like to, at this time, let you know that former Councilor Hopkins did reach out to us. He was concerned with the width in order for fire trucks to ingress and egress, and I did speak with some of our firemen, and that will not be an issue at the 12 feet since the fire trucks are only eight and a half. They felt that they could make that work, and we're only talking about a few of them in the downtown area. So with that said, anyone else?
I suppose.
Go ahead. Councilor Inger Brethson.
I'm supposed to do the hand things, but it's.
Yep, and I got you.
But that wasn't what Carter had asked. It was the street front, correct? It wasn't the width of it, it was the frontage of it? Did I misunderstand?
Sir.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor, the basic idea with regard to the changes being proposed is that the access road, if you will, it's not a road, but driveway, whatever you want to call it, right, would not any longer need to be 24 feet in width to the property in question. It would need to be 12 for residential applications.
Councilor Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I, along with former Councilman Hopkins, definitely have an issue with the 12 feet wide. We have had above average this year, but not out of the ordinary snowfall, and with only 12 feet, if they build a fence on both sides, you can't actually open your doors with fences on both sides, because as you said, vehicles are 102 inches wide, and you're not going to be able to open doors, anything else. And I know we have put in there that we cannot have multifamily dwellings as the back part of the flag lot, but we did not preclude two-story, and if we should need T1 instead of your normal F1, your normal engines, I am concerned about the size of that unit being able to get in there, also the availability of being able to get in and out with ambulances, other first responders in case of emergency. And so ultimately, on the next part of it, I will be offering an amendment to widen it.
Nobody else has their hand raised at the moment. I guess I'm a little concerned. We have properties in the downtown area specifically, and we're handicapping the owners of those properties by not passing this ordinance, in my opinion, and I own a trucking company, so my semis are just as big as those fire trucks, and I can go down a 12-foot driveway, It isn't just for those existing downtown. So I think we, as Counselor Gamroth indicated and as the chief indicated, that if this were to become more widespread, that this being a citywide ordinance, we do need to look at it further because it could proliferate. And I do understand the people in the downtown area, the existing homes, this is a concern.
Can you speak to this? It's through the planning and zoning, is it not? They would have to have certain zoning requirements. It's not like somebody could just take a lot and put two houses on it. Is that correct? Please.
I'm not sure what you mean by specific zoning requirements. In an R2, which is single-family, which is what this really applies to, you're allowed to have one unit per lot. So what this allows is those long, narrow lots currently can only have the one unit, but they have a lot of wasted space in the back. A lot of those lots are about 40 foot wide. So if you take out 24 feet out of the 40 feet, it really makes it not possible to split that lot to develop the back portion. So the 12-foot is more reasonable width to allow for the front lot to be a buildable size and still provide access to the rear lot. So it's really in only the R2 that the 12-foot would be coming into play.
Mr. City Manager, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, before Mr. Collins gets away, do you mind if I ask if you wouldn't mind responding to Counselor Gamroth's point as well?
Remind me what that point was, please.
To add on to what the chief was expressing, I had voiced a concern about this becoming, you know, our conversations have all been central to some, an area of downtown where it seems like this is more prevalent, but our current ordinance does not restrict the proximity or the area that this would be applicable. And so I guess what are your thoughts on if this were allowed citywide? Do you have a perspective on that as opposed to containing it to a certain area of town? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's somewhat subjective. I don't think it's widely used. Probably the most common use is at the end of cul-de-sacs where you have a limited amount of frontage, but you have very deep lots and you want to reduce the narrow or narrow up the lots so you can get more lots farther back away from the cul-de-sac. So I would say that that's fairly common. You know, in a typical year, we might plat maybe 100 new lots, and out of that 100, we may have five new flaglots. So whether that's a lot or not, I can't say.
Any amendments? Counselor Kathy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The amendment I would like to propose is that on any future developments, the flaglots have to be 15 feet wide. That allows for the 12-foot for the existing lots, but it would help the chief's concern about the proliferation of flaglots and the narrow streets extending to them.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second on the amendment, so we're going to vote on the amendment first. So all those in...
Discussion on amendment?
We certainly can. Do we have any discussion on the amendment? Counselor Pollak?
I'm still formulating my...
That's fine. Take your time. It's not like we're in a big hurry, so we want to get it right. That's the big thing.
Yeah, I hate making amendments from the floor.
I want you guys to get used to using that. So Counselor Gamroth, please.
Thanks, Mayor. Could Counselor Kathy please repeat the amendment? I was distracted. Thanks.
Say again.
Could you please repeat your amendment?
My amendment is to continue with the 12-foot as proposed on the existing lots. Any future developments would require a 15-foot flaglot.
Thank you. I am wondering if we might be able to ask for a few remarks from city staff on the amendment. I feel I would be interested to hear from Mr. Collins and also from the city attorney.
Mr. Collins, would you mind coming back up?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, I don't think the amendment causes any problems. I would just ask for a little clarification with the 15-foot. That would also apply to R2, single-family only, and the 24 would still be for commercial and multifamily, correct? Yeah, I don't see any problem with that.
Chief, would you mind approaching again, please? And does that seem amenable to you? I guess would be the question I would ask you.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Keith, I think I feel a lot comfortable with the 15-foot.
Use the mic so people on TV want to hear you.
Mr. Mayor, Counselors, I feel a lot more comfortable with 15 feet.
Okay, great. Counselor Gamroth.
Pardon me? Yeah, I will. I'll pass. I think that's my answer.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, Counselors. Yeah, at first blush, I don't think that I have any real heartburn with that. If it's going to be 12 for existing lots and then newly platted lots in R2 would be subject to the 15-foot minimum requirement, that seems consistent. I think that if you do it 12 feet across the board and you find out you have a proliferation, then you're going to deal with some grandfathering issues down the line. So, you know, always reserve to take a closer look, but based on the discussion tonight, I don't see any legal impediment to that.
Thank you, sir. Okay, please cast your vote on the amendment, which is, just to be clear, 12 feet for existing lots and 15 feet for any new development. Please record the vote.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. Now, the Chair also entertained a motion that was moved by Counselor Anger Breton and seconded by Counselor Pollak to approve the motion on the first reading. So please cast your vote on that as well. And please record the vote.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes. And that's an ordinance as amended?
Correct. Thank you. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of an ordinance amending the Casper Municipal Code to reduce the minimum setback requirements in the Park Historic Zoning District. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Liz Becker to Jay Carter Napier dated January 12th, 2023. Exhibit number two affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated January 10th, 2023.
Thank you, sir. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
I do, Your Honor. Counselors, the premise for this discussion tonight is really only relegated to the idea that for park historic type developments, of which public facilities are typically the only application, that the more arbitrary number of 30 feet for a front yard, if you will, setback be reduced to a 15-foot setback, which I would suggest is more consistent with other setbacks in similar properties throughout the community, and in my estimation would help standardize that that feature a little more consistently throughout our code. And that is really the only change being proposed tonight.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of an ordinance amending setback requirements for park historic zoning to please approach the lectern. Is there anyone to speak against? There being no one to speak for or against an ordinance amending setback requirements for park historic zoning, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the ordinance by title only.
An Ordinance Amending Section 17.56.030 of the Casper Municipal Code to Reduce the Minimum Front Yard Setback Requirement in the Park Historic Zoning District.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve on first reading the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Pollak, seconded by Counselor Kathy. Discussion.
Thanks, Mayor. I fielded a couple concerns, criticisms, comments from residents about this, so I guess I just wanted to summarize kind of what our discussion up to this point has been so far. City Manager just repeated it, but the 30-foot setback appears to be arbitrary, not based on any anything of objective, you know, analyses. And so that's one of the reasons I'm okay with it. It's in line with the other setback amounts, so for consistency's sake, I think it makes sense. And then there were concerns about, you know, our parks and the development. But regardless of what we set the setbacks, our Parks and Rec development team is not going to be, you know, proposing slides that end up in the gutter of streets and stuff like that. And so regardless of what we set the setbacks, our Parks and Rec team will make sure that, you know, our playgrounds and stuff are all safe and well away from the streets. So up until this point, I've not heard any any reasons not to make this change. So I just wanted to reiterate that. Thanks.
Good. And I think I'll add to that. What initially brought this up is the future construction of the new sports complex, which is going to be 156,000 square foot building that's going to go up there, and this is going to help them in order to facilitate whatever it is they're doing. And so we are 100% behind it. So with no other discussion, do we have any amendments? No? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Second reading ordinance, zone change on South Washington Street. Please read the ordinance on second reading only, by title only.
An Ordinance Approving a Zone Change of the Property Located at 1231, 1235, and 1241 South Washington Street, Lots 294, 295, and 296, Kenwood Edition, from zoning classification R2, one-unit residential to R3, one-to-four unit residential.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve on second reading the ordinance just read.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor, seconded by Counselor Gamroth. Counsel will now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. So if there's anyone to speak for or against it, now would be your time. No? Any discussion? Amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With Counsel Anger Breton's abstention noted and all others voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. Counsel will now consider consent resolutions. Please read the consent resolutions by title only.
10A1, authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the Wyoming Office of Homeland Security. 10A2, approving and adopting the Barnum Streetscape Revitalization Plan for the Casper Metropolitan Area. 10A3, authorizing a professional services contract between the City of Casper and Dynamic Controls Incorporated for door security hardware and installation at Casper fire stations. 10A4, authorizing an agreement with the Department of Justice to participate in the equitable sharing program. 10A5, authorizing an agreement with Western Plains Logistics LLC for the Center Street Enhancements Project. 10A6, authorizing an agreement with Modern Electric Company for the Ford Wyoming Center Fire Alarm Phase Two Project. 10A7, authorizing a revised cooperative agreement with the Wyoming Department of Transportation for the Midwest Avenue Reconstruction Walnut Street to Poplar Street Project. 10A8, authorizing an amendment to the real estate purchase agreement with Knife River. 10A9, authorizing an access agreement with Knife River. 10A10, authorizing the execution of an ARPA grant agreement with the Office of State Lands and Investments for the purpose of the wastewater treatment plant secondary rehabilitation project. 10A11, acceptance of an Otrona County Recreation Joint Powers Board grant in the amount of $100,000 for a Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And 10A12, authorizing a contract for professional services with GeoSynTech Consultants for the 24-28 Casper Regional Landfill Lifetime Permit Annual Reporting and Monitoring Project.
Thank you. Counsel will now consider consent, excuse me, will now entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda items just read.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Counselor Anger Breton, seconded by Counselor Pollak. Mr. City Manager, would you like to comment on any of these items? No? Okay, thank you. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please record your vote or please cast your vote. And would you please record the vote?
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. Please read the consent minute action titles.
11A1, acknowledging the receipt of financial disclosure information from city officials with public fund investment responsibility. 11A2, establishing an athletic fund and a 1% number 17 fund. 11A3, authorizing the purchase of one new compact front and wheeler loader for use by the Solid Waste Division of the Public Services Department. 11A4, authorizing the purchase of one new John Deere turf gator and one new John Deere Z-track mower for use by the wastewater treatment plant of the Public Services Department. 11A5, authorizing the purchase of 70 new club car tempo golf carts to be used by the Casper Municipal Golf Course. 11A6, appointing Eric K. Nelson as the City of Casper's representative and Tracy Belzer as the city's alternate representative to the Wyoming Association of Risk Management Liability Pool and Property Pool Board of Directors.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action items just read.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Counselor Kathy, seconded by Counselor Anger Breton. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
I think your vote is missing.
I beg your pardon?
I think your vote is missing.
Oh, sorry. Please record the vote.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. This time, we ask counselors to bring forward relevant concerns or items of interest. So in order to catch up with her, we'll start with you, Counselor Anger Breton.
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jensen?
I don't think I have anything.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thanks.
Counselor Gamroth, the floor is yours.
I just have the one thing.
What?
Yeah, it's a bit disappointing. Just I saw that Casper College had set up a scholarship. Well, Lieutenant Danny Dondis's parents, David and Carla, set up a couple scholarship at Casper College in honor of Danny, and so I believe that application window is open until March 1st. So if you're somebody who's looking at going to college and you might look and see if you're eligible for that grant, so yeah, thanks to Danny's parents for setting that up. Really nice thing they did.
Do you know where they would find that?
The Casper College is a landing page for it on like their scholarship application page, so I'd encourage people to go to their website.
Excellent. Thank you. Counselor Kathy?
Attended the Boys and Girls Club fundraiser Saturday night. That was quite well attended, and there was over $800,000. I would think that you could probably give the exact number, but over $800,000 raised for the Boys and Girls Club Saturday night. So very well done, and it's good to see that the private nonprofit entities are having fundraisers and able to accomplish that type of fundraising. I think that's excellent. And then we had our goal-setting last evening.
Thank you. Counselor Pollak?
Thank you very much. I would just make a quick note that I really enjoyed being able to attend the WAM conference and get some time with a number of our elected representatives from Otrona County in Cheyenne. Also, I think one of the most valuable elements of that opportunity was to be able to chat with other elected municipal folks from around the state, so from our region, Shoshone, Lander, Riverton, Dubois, and beyond. We spent some time with Cheyenne, members of the Cheyenne City Council, and so it was just a really valuable experience overall to just share what's going on around the state and, you know, talk about some of the shared interests we might have. So I was very excited to do that and I look forward to being able to continue working with that group.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Pacheco?
Thank you. The only thing I have, in case anybody was going to mention that, we just wanted to send our condolences to the McMurray family. And so Suzie was a stalwart and towering figure in our community for not only philanthropy, but just caring and generous, just a good human being. And so our condolences go out to her and her family. go out to her and her family.
Thank you. And, uh, that was actually on my list. What a, what an amazing philanthropist for the city of Casper and the surrounding areas and the University of Wyoming. And she did so many great things for our community and the communities around us, and she will be sorely missed. And I know, I know her, uh, her family is, is picking up right where, where she left off, and, and things will be just wonderful for the McMurray family. But we certainly reach out to them, uh, with our thoughts and prayers. Uh, Boys and Girls Club Saturday night, I got to give a proclamation, and we, we called February 4th Mike Deveraux Day. Mike Deveraux is a two-time World Series champion. He is a National League MVP and just an amazing human being. I got to spend a lot of time with him and his wife and kids, and what a wonderful guy. Grew up right here in Casper, 18 years, Kelly Walsh High School, which I, I kind of scooned over really fast in my speech, because there's a lot of NC people too. I don't, you don't have to roll your eyes, Eric, you're probably a Kelly Walsh guy, aren't you? I'm just kidding. So anyway, uh, that was a, a pleasure to be involved in. Uh, 885,000-plus dollars they raised that night. This community is just literally amazing. So, uh, I was so proud to be part of that. Uh, this Friday night, I'll be at Highland Park Church, uh, giving a speech to, for the Tim Tebow Night to Shine, which is a, a special evening for, uh, those with disabilities, developmental disabilities. And it's just a great night for them. They roll out the red carpet for them. They treat them, they treat them just like the stars that they are, and they'll crown a king and queen. So I'm, I'm proud to be part of that as well. Uh, I wanted to publicly thank the Rotary Club for their generous donation of our bus shelters. Uh, those go a long way to offer, especially in the wind that we have here. Uh, that is just a wonderful thing that they do, and so I wanted to make sure we thanked them. And, uh, also, uh, I know we already did, but I wanted to welcome Mr. Goodman. I look forward to great things up at the event center under his guidance and tutelage. Um, I think we picked a real winner there. So I look forward to seeing, seeing what he has in store for, for that and for the city of Casper. So, um, at this time, uh, or, excuse me, next meeting of the city council will be a work session to be held at 4:30 PM Tuesday, February 14th, Valentine's Day. We will all be together in the council meeting room and a regular council meeting to be held at 6 PM Tuesday, February 21st, 2023, in the council chambers. A notice of an executive session to take place at this date and during this meeting was given. We have matters to discuss regarding personnel and land acquisition, therefore, uh, and litigation, I believe. It's not on my list, but I do believe we have litigation as well. Okay. Therefore, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session at the conclusion of the executive session to reconvene this regular meeting solely for the purposes of adjournment, uh, of this regular meeting.
It's moved.
Moved by Counselor Pollock, seconded by Counselor Anger Breton. Uh, there being a majority of members present and a motion to adjourn into an executive session having been moved and seconded, and that motion requiring a two-thirds majority of the council present, please cast your votes. Please record the vote.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Okay. And we will adjourn to the council meeting room for that.